Call meeting in order. Councilman Rayno, will you lead us in the invocation? Hold on, I'll get you, hold on.
Thank you. Would you all please keep Wesley Jordan in your prayers? Wesley has had more operations than we can possibly count. He's still not doing very, very well. And so, any prayer you could say on his behalf for Wesley and his family would be greatly, greatly appreciated. Thank you so much.
Got you.
I too would like to ask everyone to keep one of our over 30 years city workers in the Recreation Department, Mr. Gus Soniak. Mother has gone on to glory. She was 95 years young. And I would like to ask you in all your prayers for her and for Mr. Soniak. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold our heads and remember that we are in the presence of the Lord. Dear Lord, as our children begin this new school year, we gather once again as a community of believers. We thank you for the energy and the spirit that you renewed in our families through the summer months. We thank you for the time to enjoy our families and friends and to reflect on what is important in our lives. Let this new school year be marked by enthusiasm and love so that we -- so that with the inspiration of your Spirit, we may continue to grow in our faith. Help us to fulfill your hope for us with honest intentions and works of faith. Let us be gentle with ourselves and bring laughter, joy, and love to others. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Councilman Klein, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum. Mr. Chairman, we've received a request to amend the agenda to include Item 3(c), Application Number 1968-16, Deronte Jones, to hold a public gathering on August 7, 2016, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. for the purpose of a college-going-away party at 1820 Lloyd Price Street, Kenner, Louisiana.
Motion by Councilman Empistado, seconded by Councilman Carroll, to suspend the council rules. All members, please vote to suspend the council rules. Can it wait on the motion? Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 6-0.
Motion by Councilman Empistado, seconded by Councilman Carroll, to amend the agenda to add Item 3(c) to the agenda. Is there -- at this time, if there's anyone in the audience wishing to object or speak on this item, please come forward at this time and be heard concerning adding Item 3(c) to the agenda. Seeing no one wishing to be heard, motion by Councilman Empistado, seconded by Councilman Carroll, to add Item 3(c) to the agenda. Councilman Carroll, I understand we have a motion to amend the title of Item 3(c). You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Clerk and the council, I'd like to amend that to end at 8:00 p.m. instead of 9:00 p.m.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Certainly.
Need a vote.
Councilmen, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 6-0 to amend.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the consent agenda. Item 1 is approval of minutes of the regular council meeting of July 21, 2016. Item 2 is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. Item 2(a) is a resolution granting an alcoholic beverage permit to Divine Mercy Catholic Church Seafood Festival on October 14, 15, and 16, 2016, at 4337 Salton Tenny Parkway, Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3 is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item 3(a) is Application Number 1964-16, New Orleans Track Club, to hold a public gathering on October 8, 2016, from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for the purpose of a road race run-walk fundraiser in Rivertown, Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3(b) is Application Number 1966-16, Celebracion Hispania de Kenner, to hold a public gathering on August 13, 2016, from 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. for the purpose of a Tope de Santo Domingo Saint Dominic Fest at Kenner Heritage Park, Kenner, Louisiana. And that concludes our consent agenda.
3(c).
We read it into the record earlier.
Thank you. Motion by Councilman DeFrances, seconded by Councilman Rayno, to approve the consent agenda. Seeing no discussion, Councilman, please vote.
Motion passes 6-0. Item 9 is public appearance for -- public hearings for final passage. We have none. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. Item 12(a) is summary ordinance number 12,095, and ordinance amending the Kenner Code of Ordinances, Article 4, Chapter 7, Section 7-171.4, exceptions, and 7-171.7a, compliance period failure or refusal to comply.
Motion by Councilman Brennan, seconded by Councilman Carroll. Seeing -- Councilman DeFrances, you've asked for the floor.
I have a quick question. Mr. Pettit, may I ask you the question, please? I noticed the verbiage is very specific. It says, "within the 15-day period after tagging of the abandoned motor vehicle." And we're not necessarily saying that it is in decrepit condition, but it appears to be abandoned because it's not moving. The owner shall abate the nuisance by moving the motor vehicle such that it is completely enclosed within a building in a manner that it is, you know, enclosed building is really what I'm looking at. If they have a back carport, in some cases, I know they do, that you can access, not grass, but a back carport, that's not an enclosed area. Could -- and it would not be visible from the street if it's in the back portion of the property. This would prohibit someone from keeping a car there?
Well, it already does. That's correct. That is not good enough, putting it under a carport in the back. This is just really a cleanup issue for -- we've gotten a couple of appeals where it was questionable. This language is further down in the ordinance already. It's just brought up and mirrored just so that it's clear to basically attorneys, so they understand that you've got to read a little bit further than you read, and it's going to save some appeals. And it's just mirroring language that's already there. It doesn't change anything. It just cleans up the language.
The only reason I ask that is about three years ago, I guess it must have been before you were here, sir, there was a couple whose son had died. They wanted to keep the car. They didn't use the car, but it was the only thing they had left of their car. And so, the city worked with them to make sure that it was not visible from the street, that it was not on grass, that it was on cement in an area that had cement and, you know, a carport over it. And we, at that point, had allowed them to keep it under those circumstances, and that's why I'm asking the question.
I won't comment on what you did, but...
Right. I'm just saying, I just wanted to put it out there. That was a very particular situation, you know, that the city tried to work with a couple.
Yes, ma'am.
But that was the reason why I asked about the enclosed portion.
Yeah.
But you've answered my question.
Yes, it's all the same. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Seeing no further discussion, Councilmen, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 6-0. Item 12(b) is summary ordinance number 12,097, and ordinance providing for an honorary designation of a portion of West Napoleon Avenue, beginning at intersection with the west boundary of Roosevelt Boulevard, with the intersection of the east boundary of Williams Boulevard to John T. Laverne Jr., Memorial Way, and other related matters.
Motion by -- pardon?
Mr. President, excuse me. I believe the mayor is asking for you to defer this till later in the meeting.
Council President.
Okay. All right, motion, you want to --
Family members are on their way. We'd like to hold this off.
Motion by Councilman Empistado, seconded by Councilman DeFrances, to defer Item 12(b) to later in the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 6-0. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by council members. Item 13(a) is a resolution calling for a public hearing on August 18, 2016, to determine whether structures located at 3120 Albany Street, Kenner, Louisiana, shall be abated by repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal.
Motion by Councilman Carroll, seconded by Councilman DeFrances. Seeing no discussion, Councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 6-0. Item 3(b) is a resolution appointing David R. DeForges as Kenner Police Department or Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board Representative for the term of July 31, 2016 through July 30, 2017.
Motion by Councilman Empistado, seconded by Councilman Brennan. Seeing no discussion, Councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 6-0. Item 14 is -- items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15(a) is summary ordinance number 12,096, and ordinance authorizing an agreement to provide disaster debris management and monitoring services in accordance with Request for Proposal Number 16-6347. Mr. President, I've received a request to amend this to include Tetra Tech Incorporated to fill in the blanks as the vendor for the contract.
Okay.
So, I need a motion.
Motion on the amendment?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Councilman Brennan, seconded by Councilman Rayno, to amend Item 15(a). Seeing no discussion, Councilman, please vote on the amendment.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 6-0.
Motion by Councilman Brennan, seconded by Councilman Rayno, to approve Item 15(a) as amended. Seeing no discussion, Councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 6-0. Item 15(b) is summary ordinance number 12,098, and ordinance approving amendment number 1 to the agreement with Dom Development Corporation for miscellaneous carpentry work and increasing the agreement $101,001 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $200,000 annually for the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Motion by Councilman Klein, seconded by Councilman Carroll. Seeing no discussion, Councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 6-0. Item 15(c) is summary ordinance number 12,099, and ordinance accepting the responsive bid received from Han Enterprises, Inc., in the amount of $88,661 to furnish and install three modern shade covers at Kenner City Park in accordance with sealed bid number 16-6355 for the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Motion by Councilman Empistado, seconded by Councilman Brennan. I don't want to get into a lengthy discussion about this, but I want to certainly acknowledge and thank each of the councilmen to my right and left, Councilman DeFrances and Councilman Brennan. I approached each of them. What this is for, we are putting -- we get -- District 5 includes the Kenner City Park, and over the playground equipment, there are -- there's no shade. And actually, we see a lot of activity at even a neighboring church in the summertime because that whole thing is shaded. This is going to put -- I don't even want to guess at the square footage, Mr. Maricola, but it's basically going to cover the entire tot lot, which will reduce the temperature out there probably as much as 20-plus degrees. But it's very expensive, almost $100,000, which would virtually deplete the District 5 account. I went to both Councilman DeFrances and Councilman Brennan and said, you know, I believe this is a city park issue, which is a citywide issue, and each of them agreed instantly. And although the at-large councilmen do not have nearly the amount of funds available to them to assist with infrastructure improvements, each of them dedicated the bulk of what they had in their accounts to do this. And so, on behalf of the citizens in not only City of Kenner, but, I mean, District 5, but City of Kenner as a whole, I want to thank each of them for their willingness to do that. Councilman Rayno, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Maricoli, are these the same type of shade covers like you put up at Gladys Playground?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know we've put different ones up throughout the city, and those have really held up well. They look nice, and they've done a great job, so. And thank you, councilmembers, for supporting that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, and that's the -- I mean, I've got to be honest. I had no idea it was going to cost $100,000 to do that, but to be honest, some of the numbers were a lot higher than that, so. It is what it is, and I think -- but we will benefit from it, so. Seeing no further discussion, Councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 6-0, and I believe that the mayor would like to take Item 12(b) at this juncture.
Are you going to reread? Why don't you reread it?
Yes, sir. I'm just trying to find it, I'm sorry. Item 12(b) is summary ordinance number 12,097, and ordinance providing for an honorary designation of a portion of West Napoleon Avenue, beginning at the intersection with the west boundary of Roosevelt Boulevard, with the intersection of the east boundary of Williams Boulevard to John T. Laverne Jr., Memorial Way, and other related matters.
Motion by Councilman DeFrances, seconded by Councilman Klein. Councilman DeFrances, would you like to open? This is a district two. Would you mind if Councilman Segir opened? Sure. Thank you.
Thank you all. Yes, this is something special to my district. As you may not know, Councilman John Laverne Jr. was the second official councilman in District 2, and served for many years, was a very fine person. You know, he was a family friend of my family, and I grew up with his sons and daughter. And so, as he came out of service from the City of Kenner and went off to the parish and then retired, moved with his family across the lake, and then had some health issues and then unfortunately passed away last year. Not exactly, I think it was last year, the year before.
It was last year.
Yes. So, then his son, John Laverne III, took over as the District 2 Councilman, served his time of eight years. And so, the Laverne family has certainly spent a lot of time here in District 2 and has been very influential in the development of this district. And so, it certainly merits that we do something to recognize the service of John Laverne Jr. And so, in cooperation with Mr. Claude Tadarrel, we have worked out the understanding to have the portion of West Napoleon from Williams to Roosevelt named in honor of John Laverne Jr. Now, this is not renaming West Napoleon because we had some issues with businesses that would have objected if we tried to do that because of them having to change their addresses. And so, worked it out with them that we are just naming this the Memorial Way, so they can still receive their mail as the West Napoleon address. But truly want to recognize this service that John Laverne Jr. made to the city by naming that section in honor of him as a memorial way. The several of the family members are here, so I obviously encourage you and ask you to please support in voting for this. And but when you finish and we take the vote, if we can take a pause and take a picture, I have a presentation to go with that to the family. So, I'll yield back to you.
Thank you. Councilman DeFrances, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. John Laverne and his entire family are good family friends. We've known each other for so many years, and I'm so proud to be able to move on this. Mr. Laverne actually served for 17 years on the -- as a District 2 Councilman, serving the District 2 seat in the City of Kenner. He actually won a runoff election for that council seat back in 1978. It goes pretty far back. And then he coasted into that. He won it easily. He worked hard, but he won it easily, which says a lot about him. And he won reelection back in 1982. He then ran unopposed in '86 and in '90. And then he won another term in 1994. We didn't have term limits back then. So, he really represented that district well, and many would say was one of the best District Council, District 2 Councilmen they had. He then ran for the Jefferson Parish Council seat, and that was the rest of the -- mostly that part of Kenner, the southern part of Kenner, and which is now called District 5 on the Jefferson Parish Council. And he represented that area as well, where he served for two terms. He was someone who was very committed to the city. He loved the city, and he wanted to serve the city, and he did that with honor. And I'm so happy to be able to move on this on behalf of his family. I think we need to honor those people that give their best for the city that they love. And so, again, we are so proud to be able to do this. Unfortunately, Mr. Laverne died on Friday. I believe it was June 19th of 2015. I remember being at the funeral. But if you attended the funeral, you saw how many people there to show their love for that man. And so, again, to the family, our condolences for their loss, but we're so proud to be able to do this for all of you today. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, Councilman, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 6-0.
And if we could go to the steps for the presentation? And if the family, if you'll please join us. Madam Clerk?
Item 16 is ordinances and resolution in summary for first reading. Item 16(a) is an ordinance amending to 2012, 2013, 2013, 2014, and 2014, 2015 capital budgets to reallocate $187,195 from various complete projects to projects for public works, equipment, and improvements to the Emergency Operations Center. Item 16(b) is an ordinance amending the 2016, 2017 operating and capital budgets to budget funds received for building permit fees from the Louis Armstrong New Orleans International Airport Expansion Program during the 2015-2016 fiscal year that were previously budgeted. Item 16(c) is an ordinance amending the 2016-2017 operating and capital budgets to budget funds available from FEMA Pre-Disaster Mitigation Grant Program for 75% of the cost of retrofitting wind protection to the Kenner Police Department building and provide additional funds for the city's 25% share of the cost and to budget the related expenditures. Item 16(d) is an ordinance approving an agreement with the firm of Linfield Hunter &amp; Junius, Inc., for professional services relating to Rivertown South Kenner drainage improvements in an amount not to exceed $481,900 for the Department of Public Works. Item 16(e) is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Compliance and Fire Systems, LLC, for a two-year contract for sanitary sewer evaluation services in accordance with sealed bid number 16-6356, in an amount not to exceed $200,000 per year for the Department of Public Works. Item 16(f) is an ordinance accepting the responsive bid received from Rainy Electronics, Inc., in the amount of $9,846 to furnish and install one scoreboard at Lincoln Manor Playground in accordance with sealed bid number 16-1551 for the Department of Parks and Recreation. Item 16(g) is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of dual tandem gooseneck trailer in the amount of $6,165.60 from the North Shore Trailer and Equipment in accordance with telephone bid number T16-2432 for the Department of Parks and Recreation. Item 16(h) is an ordinance ratifying the emergency replacement of the 15-ton rooftop AC unit of Building A located at 1801 Williams Boulevard by Beacon Air Conditioning Heating and Refrigerator, Inc., in the amount of $19,135 for the Department of Public Works. Item 16-i is an ordinance accepting the responsive bid received from Calcat Land, LLC, in the amount of $126,124 for the purchase of two Whacker Newsen ST45 10,000-pound class vertical-lift compact Skidster load cab model in accordance with sealed bid number 16-6348 for the Department of Parks -- for the Department of Public Works. Item 16/j is an ordinance authorizing the utilization of Jefferson Parish Contract 55-155567 with Truck and Transport Equipment Company, Inc., for the purchase of vehicle bodies and accessories on an as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed $220,000 annually for the Department of Public Works. Item 16(k) is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Parex Menswear, Inc., for the purchase of rain jackets and related items on an as-needed basis in accordance with letter bid number 16-1550 in an amount not to exceed $25,000 annually for the Kenner Police Department. Item 16(l) is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Kevin J. Smith Construction Company for the Kenner City Hall Building D Elevator addition in accordance with sealed bid number 16-6343 in the amount of $472,510, and approving change order number 1, which reduces the contract amount. Item 17 is reports from the council and our special committees.
Anyone? Councilman Rayno, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to let everybody know, we had a fundraiser, I believe it was last year or the year before, at the end of the year before, for KPD to acquire bulletproof vests for their offices. And the Rivertown Theatres for the Performing Arts has offered to do that again. It will be Thursday, September 8. And the normal price of admission is $30 per person. The... The theater is going to keep $10 and donate $20 of every ticket sold. The $10 is to defray the cost of that production. My council office, well, actually, I'm going to be doing it myself. We're going to provide coffee and desserts one hour prior to the show, so the doors open at 7:00, and also during intermission. So, hope everybody will support that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure. Councilman Cowell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We said it earlier during the considered agenda about the festival that'd be going on, excuse me, on August 13th in Rivertown. But I just wanted to remind everyone again, it is August 13th, and it's going to be from, let me see, from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM. There will be a mass at 4:00 PM. And it's the Santo Domingo de Guzman, St. Dominic. Councilman DeFrances, I hope I said that correctly. But that is the date again, from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM in Rivertown at the Heritage Park, where we do the music in the park. So, they're going to be dances, they're going to be food, they're going to be shows, they're going to be food, say that twice. So, if you can make it, please come out and enjoy a good family time. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Item 18 is new business. Item 18A, at the request of councilmembers DeFrances and Reno, a discussion requesting an update from the administration on the property being developed on the corner of Joe Yenney Boulevard and Williams Boulevard by Councilwoman at Large Maria DeFrances and District Three Councilman Keith Reno.
Councilman Frances, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'd like to explain to you how this came, this discussion came about. I came to know some of the people involved in this project. And a few mornings, we had coffee, and they mentioned that they had been trying to put a meeting together with the administration and with Jetco. And they mentioned that it hadn't come to fruition, so I asked them if they wanted me to talk to the mayor, and they said they would appreciate it. So, I spoke to Acting Mayor Segura, and he agreed to it. But then there were some problems because first, one person was going on vacation, I'm not going to go through the whole inning, then someone else. And then I went back again, and it was supposed to go on, and I talked to Annalisa Kelly from Jetco. And again, it seemed to fall through the cracks a little bit, only because of so many other things going on at this city, in the city of Kenner. So, I talked to the mayor again, and he said absolutely he would make sure that it, that the meeting went forward. And the only thing I asked was that I, obviously, I can only speak for myself, I asked to be included in the meeting since I had been working with those gentlemen to try to get the meeting organized. But there was another reason, because when Ed Muniz was mayor, and we were working on the Target Project, he included not only the district councilperson, but the two at larges at every single meeting. And so, I learned so much through those meetings about TIFs and about what Jetco can do to help economic development come into the city, which I found extremely beneficial. Then when the Solomon Project, our grand theater, came forward, the same thing, I was there from step one. If money had to be put forth from the District Four Council Budget in order to get a traffic study done, we did it immediately. Again, because of working together for those issues, those economic development issues. When the Coles Project came, we were intimately involved with that. And the only reason I want to point out that that project failed to go forward was not because of the city of Kenner, because the city of Kenner did a phenomenal job getting a TIF and working with Jetco to do whatever we needed to do to make that project viable. But they had a major, major shakeup at their corporate headquarters and put everything on hold for a couple of years. But because of that, I was on speed dial with the site locator for Coles. So, that kind of relationship that you build by working together is very beneficial. So, I was a little bit surprised when I ran into the same gentleman again, and he said, "Well, we had the meeting yesterday." So, since I didn't get to attend the meeting, and I wanted to know exactly, you know, how things are progressing, I thought the best way to do it was to put it on the agenda. But I do think we need to work together. If we're going to bring the economic development, everybody should be involved in doing everything we can to make it happen. Thank you for the time.
Is there a question?
I'm letting Ms. Councilman Reno next, and then I'm going to let the administration do their, their own day.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to ask the administration that any time that there's something that's going on in any council district, it doesn't matter whether it's mine or any of these other gentlemen's district, that they be included, because, you know, we represent the people of that district. And if y'all are working towards something, we would like to know what's going on as it's going on. And that's my only, you know, I think I'm asking. And I've asked that before from when Mayor Yenney was here. I've asked it before of Mr. Quigley. And I'm just asking that we be included in any of those meetings. Thank you, Mr. President.
You have the floor.
Thank you. Couple statements and questions, so we'll try to incorporate them all together. First thing is, there are, and I think I've even commented this on the last council meeting, on a statement that Councilwoman DeFrances made, there are many times working meetings with individuals who have some concept, idea, that they want to present and do in the city. So, they'll ask the administration for a meeting to sort of present that idea, present that thought, to determine where they need to go next, what they need to do to move it forward. So, the administration's responsibility in meeting with these individuals is to gather that information and then give them the guidance to determine where they need to go next. A lot of these discussions are just, okay, if you have an idea, you need to go to planning and file for your plan for some action, or go straight to code to file for a permit if you already fall within the parameters of planning and don't need to get planning approval. So, the particular meeting that Councilwoman DeFrances is speaking of has been banded about, by herself, as she said, and the developer of the project at the end of Williams, which is under construction. So, that project is already under construction, the PUD has already been approved, and it's developing. So, not sure what the meeting was needed for. We never did get an explanation from anybody, but we allowed the developer and the financer to come to a meeting to enlighten us as to what a discussion needed to be had. And at that meeting, I can surely explain to you that they tested that their project at that location is moving along. You can see the structure coming out the ground. And that everything that's been approved through their plan, their PUD, is functioning. They have no other need of us. So, we sort of left it at that. If you have other ideas, which we explained to them, for perhaps, and we don't know this, other projects, then bring them forth as a project idea for us to give you that guidance. At this point, there is no other project ideas on the table. There's no discussions of projects. There's several parties involved that may or may not be involved in other projects. They need to sort that out themselves first. So, the meeting that we had was just a sort of casual get-together to say, "Hey, is there a problem with the project that's in place already, that you need some assistance from us on?" And they've assured us that, no, they have no issues with that project. It is progressing as they planned. So, I don't have any other information than to enlighten that came out of that meeting because there was no other projects to talk about being presented to the city. So, without a project specifically being presented, the administration has nothing to present to the council either by district or as a whole at this point. And I recognize what Councilman Reno suggested, that anything going on in a council district is something that the councilman is, should be aware of. But I'm going to say from firsthand knowledge, that doesn't always happen. I have a project in my district right now going on that was not brought to my attention and was brought to the administration, went through the administration, and is proceeding now. Wasn't, to my knowledge, that it's happening. So, I'm now accepting that it's there, and it's been voted on, and it's under works. But it doesn't always happen that way, and I don't agree or disagree, but that is the process that the administration takes on projects. I've tried to say that, you know, as far as I'm going to be is open, but that's going to be to the extent that I can be. And when a developer doesn't bring a project forward, he hasn't brought a project forward, I don't have anything to present to either a district councilman, a councilman at large, or anybody that can be presented. Once that developer has a discussion with us to present a project, and we guide them through the proper processes of going to the planning, or if necessary, just straight to code, like I said earlier, then that's what we'll do. And then at that point, we'll inform the council of the pending project that is going to be going particularly through planning, which does take the council approval. So, I'm not sure if that answers your question, Councilwoman DeFrances, but...
Well, if I could interject, Councilman Segura, I mean, I think it's pretty simple. I mean, I don't, I didn't necessarily understand what the original question was, but the issue that I do think is, I don't know that anyone could disagree with, if someone were to come to you and say, "Hey, I need to talk to you about an issue on such and such street," and you know even before that meeting that deals with District Two, Three, Four, or whatever, out of courtesy, I think it would be appropriate to contact whomever. And, I mean, I got to say, Mayor Yenney was, from my vantage point, Johnny on the spot on that, to at least give me the option to attend if I felt necessary. And I think that was certainly a much better practice. And again, I don't know, I haven't had the experience that this administration has shut me or excluded me out of any meeting, so I can't speak to that. But I don't know that we can disagree with the concept that the councilman should be notified if that's going to happen. I mean, I just, number one, courtesy, number two, practicality, because, you know, when neighbors in those neighborhoods start talking about that project, or we heard this, that, or the other, I'm sure it would be a better practice if that district councilman knows, just like, so they don't experience what you're experiencing in your district. So, I don't think that's a real discussion point. Did you, you need to ask something, Councilman?
Segura, my understanding is one of the topics they wanted to discuss was the lift station, because they brought that to my attention, that there was some, that there was some, that there were questions about possibly the need of a lift station, which would not only address their project, but possibly Lake Town to some degree, and that they wanted to discuss that not only with the administration, but with Jetco. And that was the conversation they had with me. And for that reason, I thought it was absolutely important that they come to you, the acting mayor and Mr. Quigley, to, since that seemed to be, to me, it seemed an important issue to discuss. And that's why when you and I spoke, I asked to be included in that meeting, because we had had that, I had had that conversation with the gentleman involved in the project, if you remember. And so, for that reason, I thought it was important to find out what progress and if we were addressing that issue at all.
The lift station that is there, handling the project that's in place right now, is adequate.
Are we going to expand on that station at all to incorporate, to also address some of the issues, since, because of its location, not only would it impact their particular project, but it could impact a project, you know, if we had some development at Lake Town? That was my understanding from the people with whom I had spoken.
As I'm trying to explain, but, you know, cautiously, because these developers have their ideas, but they're not gelled yet, and they don't want information released to the public.
No, talking about releasing it.
I understand, but this conversation is public. So...
Councilman Segura, is there any update you can give us on that project?
I've said, the project is on track and is proceeding as forward. And that is the only project that is before us.
Is there any further update that can be given?
No, sir.
Madam Clerk, can we proceed?
Item 19 is unfinished business and our motions to reconsider from a table position. We have none. Item 20 is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
One and only.
Al Morella, 4260 East Loyal Drive, 5th District, 44 years. First of all, I'd like to ask, is Ms. Lovett in the audience from the Kenner Star? No? Okay, well, Ms. Lovett will have one meeting to furrow. At the next meeting, if she's not here, if she chooses not to come, my questions and comments are going without her. Now, I want to pass along, there was an article in The Times-Pick U N last month concerning the settlement with mortgage services in the state of Louisiana. The state treasurer deposited $2 million. There's several parishes involved in this settlement. Jefferson Parish involves the most people, is one of the parishes that involves the most people. This averages out to about $300 a person. What this settlement was for was the housing bubble that burst in 2008. And like I said, the treasurer deposited $2 million. There's a website, latreasury.org. There's a toll-free number, hotline, 1-888-925-4127. So, I'm sure that this settlement, some people in Kenner, some homeowners in this city, since this is Jefferson Parish, may be affected by this. And I don't know whether they know this or not. I mean, it was a little bitty article, you know, somebody could easily overlook it, that even reads the paper, but I noticed it. But anyway, I'd like to pass this on to the citizens of Kenner. You got the toll-free number? You want me to repeat it? Does anybody need me to repeat this?
I'm good.
Okay. Okay. And the website is latreasury.org. And it's roughly about $300 per person. And like I stated, Jefferson Parish is one of the parishes where most, most people are affected. Okay? Yes, sir. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Al. That is all. Councilman Cowell, your mic's on. Will you ask to speak or something? Okay. Motion adjourned.
Whereas throughout our lives, milestones mark the passage of time, like becoming a teenager at 13, reaching the age of 16 and earning the right to drive, the anticipation of voting at 18, and the intimate age of 21, where we officially become adults. Then there's the excitement of going to college, choosing a career, meeting that special someone, and getting married. All milestones that celebrate during an incredible journey we call life. Whereas, considering that life is indeed a unique journey, 25 productive years in business is indeed a significant milestone and an achievement we celebrate today with Craig Goodwin, physical therapist and owner of Orthopedic and Sports Therapy of Kenner in celebration of his 25th anniversary as a business in Kenner. Whereas, it all started decades ago when Craig met Rommel, and with love in the air came marriage, and then moving to Kenner, becoming residence for the last 31 years. Throughout three decades, they are blessed with three beautiful children, Alexandria, Remy, and Ridge. Whereas, as a graduate of Rommel, we've got another one of them Rommel grads here. Whereas, as a graduate of Rumel, we got another one named Rumel Grads here. Greg obtained degrees from Southeastern Louisiana University and LSU Medical Center. His private practice has grown to include Kenner, Metairie, and Harvey with affiliation to Tulane Medical Center Orthopedics, LRI Charity Hospital Rehabilitation, and Baton Rouge Physical Therapy. Ever active in the community, Craig sponsors events for the American Lung Association, Children's Hospital in Sports Injury Prevention, his athletic training, sports medicine doctor at Rumel, and SMD with Jefferson Parish Schools. In professional societies, he's an active member associating with American Physical Therapy, Louisiana Physical Therapy, sports ther, sports physical therapy, and orthopedic physical therapy. Through his career, he has been appointed clinical and educational staff in New York, Cybex Institute, NFL Combines, New Orleans Zephyr, Triple-A Baseball, NHL Colorado, NBA Chicago Bulls, and New Orleans Storm Soccer. In his spare time, he contributes articles for the Kenner Star and is a parishioner of Our Lady of Perpetual Help. Whereas, the city of Kenner hereby commends this businessman on successfully expanding his private practice in the last two and a half decades with commemorative milestones along the way, balanced with a loving family and good friends with wishes for many more to come. Now, therefore, I, Michael G. Segur, by the authority vested in me as Acting Mayor for the city of Kenner with the Kenner City Council, do hereby congratulate Craig M. Goodwin, Orthopedic and Sports Therapy for twenty-five years. Congratulations.
Just wanted to say thanks, thanks for all of y'all. Twenty-five years, it goes by quick, everything goes by real fast, you know that. I want to thank Kevin Santani for putting this together for me, a brother of mine for the last fifty years, and the mayor, and the whole council. Thank you all.